Good evening and welcome to the January 26, 2023, meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is John Meisterich. Gordon Fine is going to be here soon, so I'm covering for the moment. With me is Bill Gregory, Tony Chapodi, Bob Fahy, our recording secretary Glenda Daly, town attorney Adam Rodriguez, and Nisreen Corey, our support administrator. So our first order of business in our meetings is to normally approve the minutes.
Wait, you're going to set the dates, set the next meeting?
I'll do that. All right. I have my notes here, so.
Run with that. All right. I thought you were winging it.
I haven't paid attention for 10 years. I don't know what I'm doing.
I thought you were winging it.
So the minutes were circulated amongst the members. Any comments or concerns with the minutes?
Nope.
So I'll make a motion to approve the December meeting minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So for anyone that's here for new business, their first meeting, there's some dates and things to pay attention to. There's, the next meeting is February 23 in here. The mailings, if you need to notify your neighbors, if you're opening an application, the mailings have to be sent between January 30 and February 8. If you don't send those mailings on the proper dates, we can't open the hearing next month. So you send them with proof of mailing and provide that to Nisreen prior to the meeting, and then we can open your hearing. If we do a site, if we need to do a site visit for your application, it will be done on February 18 in the morning by the members of the board here. And hopefully in the back of the room, there's some signs, you have to do the notification and post a sign on your property. So we'll start with new business, which again is setting up for next month. Is anyone here for Mendoza, 1824 Hanover Street? Okay, so this is an application for a renewal of a special use permit for an accessory apartment. So we will refer that to the building department, and we will handle that administratively, but we will set it down for a hearing next month.
February 23.
February 23. All in, I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bukaj?
Bukaj.
Okay, your name for the record?
David Tetra, architect.
David.
Representing the owner.
Okay, so what are you trying to do at 3838 Kentland?
We're putting a second story onto the house, and we are expanding a little bit of the first floor to kind of square it off in the rear corner of the house. So the, it already has a front yard, we're not, we're not increasing the front yard nonconformity.
Okay. So we'll set this one down for a site visit for February 18. We'll refer to the building department, and I'll make a motion to set the hearing for the meeting on February 23. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bisachi, is anyone here? It's a special use for a accessory apartment, just like we had. We'll handle that administratively. We'll refer to the building department. So I'll make a motion to set that for the public hearing on February 23. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Lumi, 2226 Crom Pound, another renewal for an accessory apartment. So we'll handle that administratively also, unless someone's here. We'll refer to the building department and set it down for a public hearing on February 23. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will move on to our adjourned agenda, which are items that were opened in the past, public hearings, Carvallo. I think we have adjourned that and got information that the, that's been requested to be adjourned again by the applicant. So we'll make a motion to adjourn Carvallo. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Grace?
Same.
Same. We'll make a motion to adjourn that to next month. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next, yeah, it's the next.
1658 Amazon?
Two applications there. Oh, we're back. All right. But here we go.
Nice to see everybody again.
Hi, how are you? Can you state your name for the record, please?
Alex Elizai.
Okay.
How do you pronounce it?
Huh?
How do you pronounce your name?
Elizai.
Elizai.
I don't think I got it perfectly right, but you found your way up to the podium at least, so.
A few times.
I did something. So there's actually two, two items on our agenda that pertain to your property, and one is an attempt to legalize three accessory apartments in a single-family home and allow a second application to allow two primary structures on a lot where one is permitted. And my recollection of the last hearing is we're going to do further research on the property of the history. We've been having trouble finding that, so hopefully you can update us on what has occurred since the last time you were here.
Absolutely. So I just want to point out that, you know, I'm truly trying to be a good neighbor. I went through, you know, a very lengthy process over the past year, and I think I've done almost everything and anything that has been asked of me, including architects, engineering, spoke with the planning department, searching records, as Steve from the building department knows as well. The property doesn't have a CFO, and my attempt to legalize the property when I acquired the property was truly my intention. And the only thing based on the information that we were able to pull up, and I think, you know, it's safe to say that most people know this, is the tax assessment card, which shows that there are three units at the property. The main house had a, and I believe I highlighted it for, for everyone, the main house showed that there was a, an apartment in the main house that was rented, and the cottage shows that the cottage was rented, which means that the owner occupant at the time occupied one unit, the other unit was rented, and the cottage unit was rented. I'd like to point out just a few, a few things that I think you're also aware of. There's multiple meters at the property, there's multiple septic tanks at the property, there are three curb cuts for driveways. It's a, it's a huge, it's an oversized lot. It's 1.3 acres. There's a separate structure, which is the garage, the main house, which is the one in question, and then obviously the cottage. And the property from, from what I've been able to gather thus far, and from what the title report shows, is the property was constructed, the properties were constructed in 1940. I haven't done anything to the property other than cosmetically improve the property. I applied for the electrical permits to upgrade the electric in the main house. The cottage has its own separate meter, and that's, you know, like, these are the points that, you know, obviously speak for themselves, but other than that, there's no additions, there's no additional structures being built. I've done a ton of landscape work because the building department required it as per, I believe, the, the highway department.
Excuse me?
Again, just trying to be a good neighbor. I'm cleaning up this corner lot that has been deprived for countless decades, it appears. And other than that, there's, you know, there's not much more that I could possibly prove to the department, to you folks as well, that, you know, ultimately what we're trying to do is just clean up what's there. I've made every attempt to, obviously abide by the steps that needed to be taken through the application process. I've done everything I believe thus far that I've been able to do and try to uncover every, as much information as I've been able to uncover. And the only thing that we really have to go on is on the assessment card, which shows that a unit is rented in the main house and the cottage unit is rented, which leaves us basically three units. I believe that what we were originally asking for in terms of the four units, I believe, was a major issue or a sticking point, but if you look at even the comparables in the, in the neighborhood, there's a property for sale, which is 1802 Amazon, for sale, listed currently, which is a legal three-family property, which is less than a quarter mile away from the property. So it isn't uncommon that there, there are properties in the immediate area that are multi-unit properties. We're not adding any additional units again, we're not building any new structures, and again, it's an oversized lot that does have three curb cuts for, for driveways that are paved, by the way, and separate, and also separate septic tanks. So I even went to the extent of, in the event that there was a Department of Health issue, I went to the extent of speaking to the gentleman at the, the planning department, John.
Tager?
Yes, John Tager. I'm sorry, drew a blank on the name.
It's fine.
He said the path of least resistance, if I can't pull up Department of Health records, was connect directly into the sewer line, which is right on the street on Macau. It's literally right there, there's a manhole right there. The, the, the department also marked where we can tie directly into the sewer in the event there was a, a health department issue.
Okay, so basically, this is not, you know, quote-unquote "new" information, that we did have a copy of the assessor card, that say apartment rented out, in main house, cottage rented out.
Correct.
So.
There's no new bathrooms, there's no.
That's one, that's one apartment in the main house and one in the cottage, at least anyway here, but.
Yeah, the last time that we were here together, you were going to check and see if you could find any historical records from the building department.
We checked. Steve and I checked.
Okay, well, I'll ask you to come up.
There's nothing, there's nothing I record in the building department. And there's, excuse me, there's no COs on, on this, on this property?
No CFO.
And there's, and, and the other thing was that you were going to check the Board of Health?
Correct.
For any records in terms of the septic system?
Correct. Those were, those were requested back in September. We have not heard back yet.
You have not heard back?
We have not heard back.
So, so absent, absent the, the not hearing from the Board of Health, basically what we're hearing is that there are no records of anything in the building department.
Well, it's not that there are necessarily any records, it's that they haven't responded to us yet. Our engineering team requested them, and we're still waiting for a response. I was willing to go down there, except my understanding was I couldn't go down there. They wouldn't accept any walk-ins or anything along those lines. So we put in the request, and we've been waiting since.
What is the?
We, we, we searched, I searched, all the records that I have, that I know of that are in the building department for anything that relates to this property, for it being a multi-family property. And, you know, we couldn't find anything on it. The only thing we're, you know, we can go by is what the assessor saw when they originally went out there, and it was a one-family house with the cottage. That's all it saw. Then the other items that were listed later on, what the assessor had seen, they went out and did their inspections, and saw, you know, units that popped up.
So nothing we know?
Over the years, from 1956.
The car.
The permits should have been taken out by the previous owners or owned it.
There are, there, there were no building permits listed on the assessor records?
No. No. There are some building permits, but they're recent ones. It doesn't, it's like for some.
Nothing for the original construction.
It says 1964, remodeled house with no permit.
What was the original structure put on that property?
Um, well, to the best of our knowledge, he found that out, and I guess in the 1940s.
Where did you find that information?
On the title report.
Did you bring that information?
Um, I, I submitted all that information.
All right. I'm not looking at the files, but I thought that is important.
No, I, 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 again, I've done, I gotta tell you, this has been very, very challenging and very, very difficult, and, you know, I'm a very transparent person, and I feel that I've done, you know, as much as I can possibly do at this point. I understand there might be some, you know, additional options for us to, you know, further, you know, try to possibly, you know, uncover some additional information, but I, I think we've exhausted.
You're, you're indicating that there's a possibility that you could uncover additional information?
No, no. What I'm saying is that if there's other options, or if there's any other possibilities, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to, you know, try to further dig into, you know, any, any additional information that we can find, but I feel like I personally have done as much as I could, we have done as much as we can possibly do, and the only thing that's notated is what's on the tax assessor's card. So I believe even, even on the card, there shows, you know, there's a diagram of, you know, possibly additions on there, but it's, again, it's not necessarily as legible as it can be, but again, these are structures that have been there for 82 years now.
And basically, even if you look at the assessor's records, and they indicate, they do indicate more than one dwelling unit on the property, there's not five indicated on the assessment card.
There's not five?
There's not five indicated on the assessment card.
I'm not sure, what do you mean by that?
In other words, what you're asking for is to have a total of five dwelling units on the property.
No. Three. Just what's on the assessment card at this point.
Well, what was it? The application was for what?
Four.
Was for four?
Correct.
Steve? Right, so at this point, we have everything that's going to be submitted, or you alluded to.
I, I, at this point, I'm, I'm ready to engage.
I think he's saying, in, in theory, something might exist, but he can't find it, and we're not.
I'm, I'm ready to engage a, a new attorney at this point. I think, you know, you, you know David? David, you know, is, he's, he's working on larger projects. You know, I'm willing to engage a, a new attorney in order to try to, you know, possibly.
So at this point, do you want us to proceed at this point? Or do you want to stay, you want to stay adjourned until you have benefit of counsel?
Well, I, well, here's what I'm asking, essentially, as is. If it's three units, it's three units, scratch the fourth unit, and I'll call it a day. I think it's honestly, at this point, I, I believe, is, is a fair compromise for what, for what we've been able to uncover. We're not asking for anything in addition. There's a comp right down the road, the property is actively listed for sale, it's a three-family, there's multiple of properties that we were able to uncover also that are multi-unit properties.
Question for Adam. Adam, do we have to revise the application to three units now?
I would think so.
Yeah, so. Boy, I've been serving for a while, I didn't get answered.
Well, if you could close. Built in 1940, does that mean anything? It predates all this?
No, no, no. 1932.
Right.
Built in the 40s with no COs, so something fell through practice.
It's extremely odd to me that there's no, there's no, there's no record of the construction. That just strikes me as exceptionally odd, especially with all the construction. There's just one building yet made, but three? Give me a break.
So you don't think that you're going to be able to submit any additional information other than what we have already heard?
I'm prepared to engage new counsel, if that's what I need to do. I, I, I'm not an attorney.
That, I think, is entirely up to you, I guess.
Of course, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to do so, but essentially what I'm asking for is just, at this point, a fair compromise, simply for the sole fact that I'm, all I'm doing is improving the corner, I'm improving the lot, I'm improving the community. The property has been deprived for decades, and if you, if you've taken a look, even from the cosmetic work that I've done, the property looks a lot better than ultimately what it used to. And, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, what, what we have on the tax assessment card reflects, obviously, somebody had to live there because it was an owner-occupied unit. It's noted that there was an apartment rented in the main house, which is, which I believe I highlighted, and that the cottage was also rented. So at this, at this juncture, if it's three units, I'll call it a day and just wave the flag.
Are you going to live at this location?
I, the, the intention initially was not to live at this location. My parents live close by, but at this juncture, I, I don't have the intention of living there personally right now.
So you're gonna, so you, you want to have a, a fully rented property with no landlord on, on premises?
Well, the idea from what I said previously, my father's downsizing, so my father's a lot older, he was going to live in the cottage, and the other units, he was, my father managed properties for a living in the city, and he was ultimately going to be.
So from a legal perspective, does that constitute?
Well, it's another part of the variance that we would have to approve, you know, non-owner-occupied accessory, and we discussed that a lot last month.
We did.
And, or the last time, and it was very.
Contentious.
It would be a precedent-setting move that would affect many potential applicants, and we are very reticent to approve something like that.
This is, this is going to be a family-oriented property. There's, you know, I'm, I'm not renting this out, and I'm telling you as honestly and as transparent as I can possibly tell you, it's not being rented out to singles. It's, the yard is big enough where I was actually going to put picnic tables and even a, a kid's swing set to attract families to be able to live there. The, the idea was not to have a lot of turnover, to have somebody who was going to stay there, somebody even within the community, whether it's a teacher or somebody who's in the, in law enforcement or any sort of civil servant.
I mean, let's say all that were true, and you had the perfect tenants and everything else. If we were to approve non-owner-occupied, there's like 1,000 accessory apartments in this town, and every one of those applicants would have a justification to us to say it's going to be non-owner-occupied, we're going to rent both sides.
You're setting a precedent.
And suddenly, the, the nature of our entire town changes to, you know, to family rentals, and, you know, so that's why we're very, it would be very difficult for us to approve. It has nothing to do with you personally or any of that, you know? So that's one issue, one major issue.
The other thing I see is if you were to sell that, you know, you're going to, your intentions are all good, but if we were to approve this, with what you're asking, you could sell that property tomorrow, and now we're faced with the next guy comes along, and we have an absentee landlord situation. And like was previously explained, town doesn't want to get involved in that. So that's kind of where we're at.
How about a probationary period? You know?
Well, our special use permits are by definition probationary because they only last for three years.
Give me a chance, you know, just, give me a chance, we, we, we can do an annual review, I'm happy to do so. You're more than welcome, obviously, to come do site visits. I mean, everything that I'm doing there is to improve the, the neighborhood. Again, this is, this is a major corner, and I think, I think just, in, in terms of just being able to, you know, give the face, the place a facelift, I think is going to represent the community a lot better. Amazon, you know, has a lot of shrubbery on the road, it's not very appealing. What I've done is I've cut a lot of that back, I've even cut down trees in order to open up the property for, for better sunlight. Again, landscaping is going to be a major, a major point here, and it's, it's purely for the sole fact that I'm looking to improve the neighborhood, I'm looking to improve the community, and most importantly, looking to improve that corner, which is, once again, it's a, it's a big lot, it's an oversized lot.
So.
At this, at this point, are you considered the application to be fully submitted?
Is there, I guess the question that he's asking, is there anything more that you can basically submit pursuant to this application?
I don't know, I'm not an attorney, so I would have to possibly engage.
Probably would want to talk to your attorney before you decide which way you want to go with this? I mean, you know, were we led to believe that you're, you have engineers that are trying to solicit information about the septic system that's on that property?
Correct, it was requested back in September.
Right, and so we've heard nothing from them?
We have not heard anything from them.
All right, and?
I spoke to John Tager, again, it was, it was, it was, it's purely for the sole fact of bypassing, you know, the time.
Well, that's not the reason why we were asking. The reason why we're asking is to identify whether this was legally set up as a three-family house. Right now, we have no record, there's no CO on the property, and we have nothing to indicate that there is, and so we're looking for an alternative. If we can't find information regarding a CO, we were looking for information, perhaps it was approved, the septic system was approved for three families, and it would be on record with the county.
I understand that.
So we're looking as an alternative. Without that information, we still have no record that this is, this is an approved property. So that's, that's our problem. That's what we're trying to figure out, we're trying to accommodate you, but without anything, we're not going to do it blindly.
Well, you understand, again, just on the basis of the tax assessment card, which notes that.
The tax assessor's card shows you from 1962 to present, your saying was there since 1940, and there's no record, you got three buildings on the property, and not, there's not a scrap of evidence that there was any type of certificate of approval. This could have been built illegally. We don't know, I mean, it's like, I, I, we have no idea, and we're asking you for you to demonstrate that this is what we've got, we've looked for alternatives, we've given you other options that you could proceed and perhaps satisfy the requirement. We got nothing right now, so how can we approve something if we, if we don't have that information?
I've engaged, I've engaged, again, the engineering department, we've engaged the health department, I engaged the planning department, again, in order to accommodate, you know, in the event that there is any sort of health issues, bypassing the septics and connecting directly to the sewer, again, I'm just.
Did you hear what I said?
I did.
It's not about, it's not about accommodating what you want to do, because that can be done. We're looking to establish one that was a legal thing to do in the first place. You might only, you might only have one septic tank on the property.
Well, at this point, you may want to consider requesting in a German consult with counsel and realigning your position, because now you're going from a four, a four-family occupancy down to three, there may be some procedural issues we've got to deal with as well, and you may have to do more mailings, but, you know, I externally advise that you consult with counsel, and, and once again, you know, supplement the application and possibly revise or amend it.
Is there any, anything with other houses in, the applicant mentioned other houses that have quote-unquote "legal" three-family, you know, it's not a three-family zone?
There are obviously in that area houses that are basically what they call legal nonconforming.
Right.
Legal nonconforming status, because a lot of Mohegan was developed early in the.
Before 1932.
Before 1932. So yes, there are legal nonconforming lots, there may, and quite frankly, there are also probably illegal dwelling units on the property.
Right.
That's not something that, that, that basically lends itself to a argument for a particular application.
For justification for doing.
No characters of the neighborhood.
If, absenting anything else that you have to give us, does anybody else in the audience want to comment on this application?
I'm doing everything I can, I really am.
All right, so you may, if, if I'm not mistaken, the board is basically saying, if you have any other information that you can supply to us, or if you are desirous of contacting or engaging counsel, new counsel in this, that's fine, we can adjourn the application, or alternatively, if you don't think you're going to be able to come up with anything, then we're going to probably close and reserve.
That's.
So, so that's, that's, that's something that we can offer you as an option.
Appreciate that.
Just let us know what you want to do.
Um, I think, so, so you're saying to resubmit the application for?
Well, we would adjourn this hearing.
We're going to adjourn.
And if you wanted to change your application from four, you know.
Although, although at this juncture, I don't think it's going to make much of a difference. You know, basically, we're still looking for some kind of a justification for multi-family dwellings on a piece of property that's been zoned one family since 1932.
Or, you know, or.
So at the end, at the end of the day, whether it's a three-family house or a four-family house, we still have to make a determination of some type of whether, whether the thing had any legality whatsoever, or whether it was done illegally, whether it was a two-family, a three-family, or something like that. We've already basically said that the accessory apartment law doesn't really apply.
Right.
Okay? That's not something what they're asking for, they're actually asking, in my mind, for a use ferries, which is extremely difficult to get.
Right.
But unless we have some justification for any of this stuff, and, you know, obviously the applicant hasn't been able to come up with anything yet, but we can offer the option of you continuing to look, at least for another month, to see if you can come up with anything. If that's something that you're desirous of, then we can adjourn the thing.
I'm happy to do so. I'll give it a, I'll give it another shot.
All right, so then we'll, we'll adjourn the application.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn this application.
Before you, before you do that, when was the last time the, the, Westchester County was contacted regarding this, this septic situation? You said in September, has, has there been any follow-up?
There has, well, the, the engineering department did follow up, but they, we haven't received anything yet.
And that was in, that was done in writing, or was that a phone call?
In writing.
Documentation for that?
Writing.
Okay.
In writing.
Is there something in the file?
Do you have a, do you have a copy of the letter that you sent to me for the help?
I can request it from the engineering department.
The engineering department made the request?
Well, not your department, I'm sorry, but my.
Your engineer.
Your engineer.
My engineer, correct.
Yes, it would be nice if you would have a copy.
Absolutely.
Definitely to show the effort, okay, you're trying to go through the process and, right, I mean, as much information as you can get.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do so.
That's what I would recommend you do.
I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make a motion to adjourn this hearing until the February 23 meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
So, do we have O'Donnell?
He's not coming tonight. That's.
I believe, yeah, that was.
That's adjourned, right.
Well, Grace is opposed, but anyway, so that, I'll make a motion to adjourn O'Donnell to the next meeting, February 23rd, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I have a couple that may be adjourned, I believe, Ali Hajdaraj?
Is he adjourned?
Is adjourned, no one here, right?
It was adjourned at the request.
Actually, yeah, so we didn't even open that hearing. And Kurti, is anyone here on Kurti, because we.
And adjourned as well.
That's also adjourned.
Back and forth a little bit, yeah. Yes, 1655 Central. So if anyone was here about 1655 Central, the applicant did not complete the mailings on time or through the proper dates or some issue like that.
Is this for Kurti? It says 1681 Summit Street.
So let me clarify, our agenda has 1681 Summit Street.
It's a correct address.
That's the incorrect address, I don't know why that is the case, maybe that's the owner's address or something, but the.
It was just a typo.
Okay, so the actual address is 1655 Central Street is the correct address, and there's a sign and whatnot. So what I've been told is that the, the mailings were not done correctly or some issue, so we're not going to open that hearing this week, this month. So it's going to be automatically adjourned until next month, unfortunately for anyone who's come here and had to sit and listen to Amazon for 20 minutes, but I'm sorry.
I apologize, we received another notice?
Yes.
That actually the mailing's been completed?
Um. So if they weren't in those dates, you know, and like.
They're going to re-mail the notice.
The dates were correct, but the setbacks were incorrect, so they had to re.
So they're going to re-mail the notices to you, and you will get them again.
Get a new notice.
But just so you know, we're going to have the hearing next month, all things being equal.
Yeah, February 23rd.
February 23rd, yeah. When, when you go online to, I've not had to do it, but when you go online to check the agenda, when you go online to check the agenda, will it say what's adjourned and what's not? Does it tell you that? Is it the same copy as this?
It keeps changing, it's the same.
Oh, all right, well, I mean, two days before.
Yeah, it would.
You know, it's like if you did it Monday, you know, we'd know Monday if the meeting was Thursday, right?
It says it on the.
Says it on the, on the, on the website?
In the box.
Okay, folks, we're going to move on to our, the rest of our agenda, so if you could exit the, exit the meeting room.
Hey, that feels, I like this.
The record show that's Bob Fahey banging the gavel, not me.
I'm driving nails.
Thank you.
Cracking walnuts.
Okay, so we will go on to our agenda for today's meeting, the, the public hearings that we opened last month. One is for Taco Bell, 3571 Mohegan Ave, is anyone here on that?
It's the sign guy. The sign guy. Did this have to be?
The, let me, can.
Refer to Abaka.
Yes.
Yes.
So can you get the file and we'll read the memos if we have any?
Let him get set up.
So, before you start, I'm going, do we read the memos first, or, no, we let him talk first. Let me just say what this variance is for, it's an application to allow a sign of 9.5 square feet where zero is required, so allowed or permitted, on the north elevation and a sign of 34.7 square feet where zero square feet is required on the west elevation per section 300 dash 21 appendix D of the town zoning code. So, turning to the applicant, please state your name for the record.
James Polinsky from Signs Inc. representing Taco Bell.
Okay, so can you walk us through the signs and?
Okay, so, the proposing channel letter sign, so this is the, the front of the building that faces Route 6?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, can you get a little closer to the microphone if possible?
Sorry. So this is the front of the building here, facing Route 6, they're doing a white channel letter sign with a bell logo, similar to what was done on Route 202. This then is the Mohegan Avenue side, which is, both of these frontages are okay, they have a frontage, so they're allotted, this is just the bell logo, and the ones that we're here for is the rear of the building, where they're looking to do a channel letter sign as well, it's a smaller sign, it's.
The one that's nine square feet?
Yes.
Where, where, where's the back of the building? Where, where does that face, does that face Mohegan Lake itself, Sagamore, in that?
Yeah, so it faces the, like, the, it used to be the Teachers Federal Credit Union, I think it's a different bank now.
It faces the parking lot, it doesn't, okay, it doesn't, like, if I came down Sagamore, I'm not going to, it's not going to be looking at me from there, right?
No, it's going to be facing the parking lot.
In the parking lot, okay, so you got three sides, I got you.
And then this other side is, if you're driving on Route 6 headed, I guess, west.
That's the one that's facing the church?
Faces the church. So you will see, as you're coming down Route 6, if you're heading towards, let's say, JB Mall, you will see this tower here, and that's the other sign that they're requesting that needs the variance because it doesn't have a frontage, and also a channel letter sign.
That's the one that's 30.
Correct.
34.7 square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's three signs, and one is quote-unquote "legal," I guess, or there's?
Well, there's, technically, there's four signs, because you have the one on the front on Route 6, this is considered a sign, the bell logo, because it is an illuminated bell, but these two have a frontage, these two do not have a street frontage. Uh, we went to Abaka, Abaka approved.
So there's a memo in here from Abaka, so I'll, I'll read it into the record at least. So in a memo dated January 4, 2023, the Advisory Board on Architecture and Community Appearance, that's Abaka, reviewed the above referenced subject at their board meeting held on Tuesday, January 23rd. The applicant was present, the application is a request for sign variances as follows. So south elevation in parentheses incorrectly noted on referral as north elevation, a variance request for a sign that is 9.5 square feet where proposed sign does not front Mohegan Avenue. West elevation, a variance request for a sign that is 34.7 square feet where proposed sign does not front East Main Street. Abaka has no objections to the variance requests based on the renderings submitted and attached. See if there's any other.
Two more. You have one from planning?
One from the county.
And one from the building department.
I found one, oh, and that's a notice, it's a no. Yeah, I have, um, thank you.
There's both of them there.
All right, there's a couple more memos here, I'm sorry. So we also have a memo from Steve Freata, who's in the audience, from the building department, January 18th, application for variance for two signs, north elevation variance sign 9.5, same 30, 34.7 on the west, no objections to granting this relief. And planning board meeting on January 9, 2023, planning board discussed for signs not facing, though it was noted that the south and north elevations were mislabeled on the submitted plans, the planning board had no objection. So, I guess the only, one of the issues is mislabeling it.
Just, just to clarify, it really is the south elevation that we're talking about with one of those, is that correct?
Correct.
And the assistant building inspector agrees.
I was assuming that these plans were the same plans that were used for coming to get the building approved, so I don't know if it was never caught or if it was just, or it was my mistake that it was.
Okay, well, in, in any event.
Litigated correctly.
We, we will revise the application to put south instead of north. Quiet on the south elevation. Correct.
Okay, does anyone in the audience have any comments on this? No.
Building apartment guy.
So does anyone on the board have any feelings about these signs? Anything at all, any comments?
Not really.
Questions, concerns?
I mean, this tower, it's basically one side, it's the same tower, it's just one on one side, one on the other, it basically goes around a corner.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, the signs are, are legal but for road frontage, basically, you know?
And, and then on the, in the parking lot, it's just a.
I don't know if I should say it that way.
And in the parking lot, it's just, it's just a symbol.
Make a motion.
What's, what's the, what's the one at the back of the location, in the parking lot?
The one here where it has the Taco Bell.
It's, it's small, right?
Taco Bell individual letters with the, with the bell itself.
Aye, aye.
The letter itself.
Right, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve this application, I'm going to say it because we're going to change it a little bit with the north-south, but I'm going to make a motion to approve the application to allow the sign of 9.5 square feet where zero square feet is required on the south elevation and a sign of 34.7 square feet where zero is required on the west elevation per section 300 dash 21 appendix D of the town zoning code. Any seconds on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Bisanya is a, is a renewal, so we'll do that in a few minutes. Charnis.
Which one is this now?
So, this is a application for a renewal of a special use permit for storage of a commercial vehicle on the residential property, so can you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Julian Charnis.
Okay, Mr. Charnis, my recollection is this is not a new, it's a renewal, it's been there for many years, so.
You knew it for probably seven or eight times.
So it's 24 years, I guess.
Yeah, that's right. And I have been parking.
So 24 years, has anything changed?
Those plants have gotten bigger.
That's right, that's all that's happened, is the trucks have been hidden more and more by the plants growing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, given the fact.
There is a memo from the building department, it's pretty straightforward, January 18th, it's an application for a special permit to store a commercial vehicle, residential property per 300 dash 62 of the town zoning code, property is an R120. I inspected this property on January 18th, 2023, and found no violations, I have no objections to granting the special permit.
Okay.
We proceed accordingly.
So, given that this has been for a very long time and there's no changes and no seeming issues with the special use permit, I'll make the motion to approve for three years the renewal of the special use permit for storage of a commercial vehicle at 2248 Edward Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, good night.
See you in a few years.
See you in a few years, right?
That's for, what, a period of three years?
Three years.
Yes, three years, right.
3.2.
All right.
Okay, Bisanya is a administrative approval for a renewal of a special permit, so Bob, is there anything in the file regarding memos or something that, well, read the memo, I suppose.
I don't, I don't see anything other than.
There is a memo.
You have a picture, there is a memo, it says right here, dated January the 19th, from the building department. This is an application for renewal of special permit for an accessory apartment as per 300 dash 38 of the town zoning code, property is in an R120. Again, new paragraph, I inspected this property on January 19th, 2023, found no violations, and I have no objections to granting renewal for a special permit.
Okay, so based on the fact that it's a renewal and nothing has seemingly changed and no issues have been noted with regard to the existing special use permit and accessory, I'll make the motion to approve for a period of three years an accessory apartment at 586 Madison Court. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
There is one extra.
Is there anything else on our agenda? No, right?
I don't see it, but there was, this was, this file was in with the new business, I don't know whether it was, was opened or not. I don't see anything on, on the agenda.
Recognize the name.
Gordon just texted me.
What, Gordon just said nothing else?
No, he just asked where we are.
Oh, I thought it was filed.
So there is an application for a variance from October, but I've never.
I don't think it's ever been opened, there's nothing on the calendar.
Which one? Oh, no, that was last month, that was.
Huh? Oh, we did it, okay. I guess we did.
Just double checking.
Charnis was the last.
Okay.
Just double checking, relax, ladies. We're not doing our thing.
All right, so this concludes the January 26th meeting.
This is Gordon's, that goes in the file, put the file away, and then you can close the meeting. Rock and roll, rock and roll.
So again, since there is no, no more business, we'll make a motion to close the